He never does.
Let's get settled in here.
I don't think the time is yours.
Yeah.
That is in metal.
All right, if we, why don't we call this to order? Well, I'll call our listening session to order tonight, Monday, August 26th. Thanks to everybody for being here. We have a quorum, so we can get started. We've got three folks, maybe about three and a half, I think, who called ahead and registered. So Brian Wolf to talk for us. Sally, I see you there. Sheri, I don't see yet. And then Pat, I see as well.
Are you Sheri?
Oh, I'm sorry, Sheri, I didn't see you. I apologize. It's a, thank you for being here. I looked right back. I apologize. Thank you. And we have Pat also. Is there anybody else who is looking to speak tonight? So given that time breakdown and make sure everybody's got the same amount of time, well, why don't we go with about seven minutes apiece? And we'll make sure we get out of here at 6:15 and get down to our council meeting. So why don't we start? Brian, why don't you start us off, please?
Thank, thank you. So I'm here again. It's good to see you.
If you could just identify yourself for the record, so we have it in.
Brian Wolf. Address is 3321 Overlook Drive. And as I started to say, I'm, I'm here back again. It's good to see you again. Little same general topic, Restore the Nine. I brought with me some handouts because I want to talk just a little bit about education. And I wanted you to know that when it comes to education, I'm a bit of an authority on what kids need to succeed academically. I've done some research and I've worked, on the back of the one page, you'll see that I received a volunteer award for spending a number of years teaching grade school kids about biodiversity and conservation and that kind of thing. Also taught at college and became interested in how do you predict what students succeed, which ones won't? And so I started collecting a lot of data on the background of students to find out what, what makes them successful. In addition to the many variables that I looked at in that paper, and I didn't give you the whole paper, you can look it up online if you have any interest in going through that. I don't expect you to, again, that was just to give you some background on, on what I've done. When I looked at all the different variables, found that, this wouldn't surprise you, that students that came into my natural history and environmental biology classes, I would ask them if they could name 30 plants and animals found in Minnesota. Those that could tended to do much better in the class. Now, they were taking natural history. So we were studying our native plants and animals. So you'd expect that, they had a leg up. But there were some other interesting findings. Not only were they better in my class, but they were significantly better at mathematics. And their overall GPA was higher. So that prompted me to think about why that is. What, what is it that, that makes some students able to identify 30 plants and animals and also better at mathematics? And I think I have an answer to that. And it would have to be called a hypothesis because there are many, many variables. I can't tease them all out. But I think that, that we know that children, even adults, have what has been called biophilia. We have a natural interest in the living world around us. And it's often through that, getting that excited, that we get interested in the sciences as children and young adults. I'll think a little bit about my experience, and that's going to bring me to Nine Mile Creek. I spent a lot of time down there, and I don't think there's any doubt about the fact that that had an influence on what I decided to do later, my willingness to get into the sciences and do the hard work to, to learn that stuff. Because I got turned on the sciences in, in Nine Mile Creek. I would say that when we talk about privilege, that was a privilege I had. Not every young person gets an area like that. And to experience that, and it, it makes a big, big difference. So I'm here today to encourage you to save that Nine Mile Creek corridor, that Central Park area, as an educational setting. I'd love to see it used that way. You're going to hear more from Restore the Nine about our ideas for perhaps some sort of educational challenge course that you could work through as you went down that, that trail along the creek. A little bit like the physical challenge courses you've maybe seen in some of the parks where kids can climb over jungle gyms and then they go down a ways and do something else, 20 pushups, whatever it is. But something that, that to get their minds engaged, an academic or educational challenge course along the creek. Love to see you be inspirational. Inspire future generations, inspire professionals like myself with what can be done when you really take $20 million and put it towards restoration. What a wonderful difference that can make. Inspire others to do that. Like I say, inspire children through doing that. I see something like, you know, is it Harry Butler, The Garden? You know, bring back some of the plants, put them in there, some of those that are missing, and make that a real attraction. And I'd ask you to aspire to something, aspire to something more than what has been done elsewhere. This stretch of Nine Mile Creek isn't the same stretch that you find upstream where we have bike trails. It's different. And I think it deserves to be treated and used differently. If you've been acquainted with the ideas of utilitarianism, I know that's a, an idea that's somewhat out of fashion, but I think that that corridor has greater utility. It can be used as an educational corridor to a much greater advantage than it can be used for bicycles, for example. And then if I can have just a few more minutes, do I have just a couple?
Got about a minute 30 right now.
Okay. But I just want to tell you what I've learned since the first time I was here, and I had just met these people, and told you that I was not yet a member of Restore the Nine. I'm now a member of Restore the Nine. I've been going out door knocking. Just last Saturday, I knocked on a door on 110th Street, met one of my teachers from Oak Grove Junior High in the 19, early 1970s. He's now, due to genetic illness, he has gone blind. But he remembers that, that trail along the creek. And he just insisted, I don't ask for money. Think about this, you're politicians, you go to doors, at least 85% of the people I visit are enthusiastic and immediately supportive. A great many of them, every time I go out, somebody gives me a check, even though I never asked for one. Because it means that much to him. And that includes him. He'll never go down there again. He's blind. He'll never see it again. But he wanted to give me a check because he remembers it and he thinks it's that important. And that's not the, an abnormal situation. Seems like I see that every time I go out. In fact, I get invited in so often for cookies, doughnuts and coffee, and I'm putting on weight. I go out walking and I come back heavier than, than when I started out.
I'm going to have to cut you off. We're at seven minutes.
I'm, I'm good at that point.
Very good. Thank you much.
So last time I was here, I had some questions, and I sent you guys the questions, and they haven't been answered. And to save time, I'm not going to read them again, but I would like them answered. I'll send them again. And about having lighting in the parking lot. So on another topic, at the last listening session, a woman spoke about being followed by the police and stated, quote, "I'm speaking to a lot of residents on the east side, and I find, found out that I am not the only one," unquote. She also stated, quote, "And hopefully other people will come out too and start talking about what's happened to them on the east side of Bloomington," unquote. One example of what happened to me is directed patrol reports specifically mentioning my name. Thursday, December 5th, 2019, 2:28 PM, extra patrol due to past issues with Sally Ness and Al Farouq members. Monday, December 9th, 2019, 1:58 PM, extra patrol in the area due to past issues between Al Farouq members and Sally Ness. Saturday, December 14th, 2019, 2:24 PM, extra patrol due to past issues with Sally Ness and Al Farouq members. Tuesday, December 24th, 2019, 10:41 AM, extra patrol to past issues issued between Sally Ness and Al Farouq members. Thursday, January 2nd, 2020, 10:30 AM, direct patrol due to past issues with Sally Ness and Al Farouq members. Appears peaceful at this time, no traffic ordinance violations. Sunday, January 5th, 2020, 10:56 AM, extra patrol due to past issues with Sally Ness and Al Farouq members. Backed up, 4862 with BP 4811. Thursday, January 16th, 2020, 10:27 AM, extra patrol at the temple due to past issues with members and neighbor Sally Ness. The reports make no sense. The reports are from December 19th and January 2020. It is cold, so unlikely about the charter school or the weekend religious school using the playground. The reports do not include a Friday or a religious event, so unlikely about the overuse. Additionally, I stopped taking pictures August 27th, 2019, when the officers came to my car while I was in my neighbor's driveway with her permission, legally taking pictures of concerns such as the non-compliance to the disability parking. The officers incorrectly told me I should stop because I could be charged with violating the Minnesota harassment statute, which I could not have been because I was legally taking pictures. I'm asking the city to explain why the police were putting my name in police reports and driving through the neighborhood when I had not broken any laws.
I will, I'll have to get an answer because I don't know how they would identify you without naming you. I mean, if there's a specific concern about a specific person, I think they named them in their radio calls and in their, their information.
Right. And I wasn't breaking any laws.
I didn't say you were. I said they were, there was concerns enough that they wanted to identify you just to make sure that everybody knew what was going on.
Just FYI, there was no interaction between me and them. I was in, the one time in the driveway, so it's not like these reports are making it sound like I'm walking.
No idea what the reports are about or what, what they were talking about.
Right.
2019.
Maybe if we did an internal investigation, as I had requested, you would know. But so far, that hasn't happened. And you just don't go and put somebody's name on police reports and drive through the neighborhood. There wasn't the conflict that these reports show. And again, it's December and January, fricking cold out. Yeah, something's.
Know the details. I don't know the details.
Right.
I do know that our police obviously were concerned enough that they, they, they use that language in their.
Yeah, and I want to know what they're concerned about because there was nothing.
Please.
Sally, you didn't actually read the full citation or the full language. And in most of these, it says, "I found no ordinance violations. I found no parking violations." It's, you know, like, so you're dismissing the fact that they may have actually been responding to things that you were calling the city about at the time. Because you call every week about parking violations, noise violations, light violations, not having enough light, right? So they could be, actually have been responding because you were submitting complaints to the city.
And if you heard what I said, what I had just read, if you had heard.
You didn't read everything.
If you heard what I had just read, none of those dates are about Friday or Eid or school.
Every school day.
About Friday, are you reading the emails? They are about Friday, they are about Eid.
And I don't think, almost none of us were on the city council at that time.
Again.
We weren't getting those emails.
And so the emails that you are getting, they are about Friday.
Now they are, true. Now they are. These are from 2019. And so you're talking about why you were getting kicked out, but they're about noise violations and traffic violations, which are the things that you were calling about.
No, no, there isn't, I have not called about traffic on a Saturday afternoon. Parking, the parking is Friday. Seriously.
Only the county.
No. This is, this is inappropriate.
Well, one second.
Parking concerns are Friday and Eid.
Miss Ness, this is, so I, I ride along with the police all the time, right? When they say extra patrol due to past issues, whatever, what, what that usually is, is that because of your reports, they are being diligent all week long. That's how this works. There's you, what usually happens is in the roll call that happens at the change of shift, there's a conversation, and anybody can go to a roll call and watch this if you ride along, so you can, you can confirm my point, okay? They go through the roll call, and they say, hey, we're going to do extra patrols in this area. Could be sometimes, and, and for example, recently, it's been because of the issues that we're having at Zertzies and American Boulevard with the, with the issues with parking at the heights there, for example, there's extra patrols happening. I had a recently in my neighborhood, Emerson and, and 85th, because there were extra patrols requested, they put one of the signs that do, you know, reinforcement of the, the speed, the new speed limit, for example.
I'm going to just, I have a short.
Wait, wait.
Time, it's short time.
Extra patrol due to past issues is their way of saying, these are happening more frequently, and these are the reports from those more frequent reports. But I would agree with, with Councilmember Carter, most likely they happened because of the, the length of, of the inquiries, so it was put on the roll call to do for the week.
Well, the police should be more diligent than that because the reports are concerned with traffic on Friday.
See how it works, that's all.
And how it should work is, we have a problem on Fridays. We don't have a problem on a, two o'clock on a Monday. We don't have a problem on Saturday.
Pretty sure, Mr. Mayor, and you too, Mr. City Manager, we do have patrols on Fridays at Al Farouq.
Yes, we do.
Now, they may not have been there in 2019. Again, none of us can corroborate that, but they are happening today. So I think the things that you might complain about on Fridays can be witnessed directly by the police right now.
And so, again, none of these include a Friday. And again, the, the concern at the time.
It's not because.
The concern at the time was the playground and the parking.
Right.
And the parking in the street is Friday.
Sure.
During Eid, during events, this is, none of that.
Christmas holiday, and the Christmas holidays are celebrated by Muslims. So like, this is going on because of, of, of extra activity.
We're, we're, we're at, we're at time. And Sally, I, I think the bottom line is the, the police had a reason to do this. They don't do things.
Find that reason. You'll find that reason, and yeah, you just usually say, oh, if we give you an answer.
Probably not, Sally. I'm not going to go.
Probably not.
Something that happened six years ago, to ask them to try and recall what they were thinking in December.
Should be data to back up why they're going directly into the neighborhood.
And so, so you want us to expend time and resources to dig into the data to figure out?
I wanted an internal investigation, and there's plenty of reasons, and there should have been one.
Sally, we're not doing an internal investigation.
I know, I know. And this, this is reason there should have been, back when I had asked for it, it wouldn't be years ago, back when I asked for it.
Miss Ness, were they investigating you?
Just for your recollection, the city attorney.
Not the other stuff.
Were, they were driving in the neighborhood because of issues with me. There wasn't an issue with me. There wasn't, my name shouldn't be.
That's all I wanted to know. They weren't issues with you, they weren't, they weren't there for you.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, just one comment to where Miss Ness says that they're going into neighborhoods. Our police officers are always patrolling neighborhoods.
Yes, they are. As they should be. Yep. Sheri.
I've never been to one of these. I wanted to bring up the fiber optic.
Oh, please, yes.
Yeah, the last time they came around to the.
Sure, if you could officially identify yourself, just we've got you on the record. Okay, Sheri, we'll, we'll go with Sheri then. Very good. All right.
Yeah, the fiber optic, the last time they came through, they said they were, you know, digging around the square things, digging the dirt out, they're going to put fresh dirt in, lay some seed down. I said, there was already grass there, you didn't have to do all that. I was mowing right over it. It was fine. Well, then they dug two other spots in my property. And that, no, no rhyme or reason. And I went out there and there was around my sewer pipe. I got pictures. Around my sewer pipe. Why are you digging there? There's no reason for that. They said, well, we needed restoration. I said, well, then do the whole yard. Take a look at it. I got crabgrass everywhere, you know? So there was no reason for that. I said, put it all back. I made them put it back in those, there's no reason to dig there. I said, you're not allowed on my property anymore. That's, I'm done.
Do you know what company you were dealing with?
Pardon?
Do you know which company you were dealing with? Was there markings on the truck or did they identify that?
ITG, I think it was one, and.
Afterward, if you could give us your address so we could take a look at it. We've got, we've had a number of complaints.
Yes.
And we've been following up on as many as we get the information and can follow up on, and trying to correct any issues that are there, or make sure that folks who are blatantly violating any kind of rules or, or the rights of neighbors, we ask them very politely not to come back. So, so we'll, if we can get your information. But if you, if you have any more.
Yeah, and then, yeah, then there, then the next, not too long after, a couple days later, I thought it was actual ambulance, but it wasn't. Big ass, Chicago Fire Department at the top, he was pulling something behind it. He was trying to back up, he went, drove up on my yard, and I already called the city, we got, need to come fix that. We'll put you on the calendar. You can see it's dipped down, right by the curb.
A, a Chicago ambulance?
That's what it said at the top. And then he come down the road again, and I was like, an ambulance? And actually, a siren happened to be going down the road at the same time, and it wasn't, no. It looked like an ambulance. And I, but anyway, so they need to come and fix that because he come right up on my property and you can, I was mowing my yard, my foot fell down, and I thought, hmm.
Mr. Ruggie.
Mr. Councilmember, Sheri, can I ask you a couple questions? When you say it's on your property, you know, are you, are there's a certain amount of right of way that they're allowed? So are they actually going beyond the right of way onto your property, like into your front yard?
I knew you were going to say that.
I just.
No. I maintain that, that's mine.
Well, if, if it's the right of way, they have the right to be working.
Not if they're digging around my pipe.
They do, they do.
Not on my pipe, they're not, they break that pipe, they're.
If they break the pipe, they have to repair it, but they.
But there's no reason for them to be.
Have the right to be in the right of way.
Nope.
Our ability to control them is we can, we have to issue a permit to them. We don't have a lot that we can say in that regard. And then we have to try and enforce when they're not following the rules. And as the mayor was saying, unfortunately, our history with them have not been following the rules. So if they come in and they do a poor job of digging and then not returning the property to the state it was in before, that's a performance issue. We have had contractors that have hit pipes, whether they're gas pipes or sewer pipes, and they're required to fix those pipes. And it's a huge inconvenience for residents, and they're allowed to be there.
I'll show you the pictures. Because no, it wasn't a digging where the square is, where there's a pipe. The pipe's way over here, the square's over here. What are they doing over here?
Across your entire front property.
No, 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 they're digging around the pipe. They dug around the pipe this way, this way.
Right, I follow what you're.
Just to put dirt in, put seed over something that they had no business touching.
Understood.
So I got pictures of it, no.
I, I'm not trying to defend them. I'm just saying, like, what we all have to understand is that the entire front of your property, the first five to eight feet, depending upon your particular plot, is considered right of way, including where you're talking about. I'm not saying they have the right to do that or not do that by their, by the first, I think that exactly what you.
She's saying that there was no reason.
I, I understand that. They don't have to have a reason as long as they have a permit. That's what I'm trying to tell you.
No, they cannot just dig around my pipe just because they have a permit. The permit's not to dig around my pipe. The reason is to dig, put fiber optic in. The two are way business apart.
I'm not going to be the subjective judge of whether what they're doing or not is for that purpose, I guess is what I'm saying. I'm not an expert in laying fiber optic pipe. It sounds like you might be, and that's great. So if you can call them on that and say, hey, that's not laying that, I get that. But I'm, what I'm trying to say is, they have two obligations to us. One, to do the job that they're permitted to do, and two, to restore the place to what it was prior to their digging. I can't explain why the people in this particular thought, thought that they were doing that, but I also don't want to assume that they weren't doing that. And to their mind, whether that was right or not, I agree, I understand where you're coming from. Because it happened in my yard too. Right? I get it. I have a big block in my yard too. I totally understand. I'm just saying, like, if they thought that that was part of their order, and that's what they were doing, I can't, like, I don't have the documentation to say that or not say that.
No, I got pictures, so no, that's not a part of the order. You weren't even.
That's what I would.
No business on my pipe at all.
That's what I would challenge here, and I'd send that to the city then.
Yep. Have you called city staff, by the way? Yes, I was going to add that, yeah.
With the dip down where he drove up on the thing, yeah, they need to fix that. That wasn't like that. Yes, I did, and they said, well, we'll put you on the books. I'm like, okay.
Yeah, there are a lot of complaints right now. Wouldn't be surprising if they didn't get out right away.
So, and, and you can.
Could have fell. And my foot went down into that.
Yeah, yeah, I follow that.
Yeah, we've had uncovered holes in people's front yards, which are.
Five foot deep.
Yep, enormous, enormously, enormously dangerous. So if you could, right up in the meeting, if you could talk to Safa, make sure we've got your address, we, we have your contact information, we can get back to you. And we will, we will, any pictures, and we will, we will follow up accordingly, if that would work for you. Okay?
Anyway, I got something else.
I, now we're out of time, unfortunately. Yep, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
There's always next week.
Yes, there's always.
Wait till next week, because I've already called the cops, and they drive right by and don't do nothing. It cannot wait.
Grab some on the way up.
Yep.
Yeah, we'll be with it.
We can get you after, we can talk quickly afterward as we're on our way down, so. And Pat.
Good evening and welcome.
Well, thank you, thank you all.
Identify yourself, please, so we have you for the record.
I am Pat Gorenbacher, and I am here on my favorite topic, which would be the new Health and Wellness Center. And I'm here, I am disappointed in Park and Rec that after all the effort of collecting over 100 senior surveys, which was the matching survey to the one sent out, Park and Rec chose not to present it to you. They chose to look at it and let it go. And I think that's an indication of the Park and Rec senior opinion. And I also, so I was very disappointed that after all that effort, Park and Rec goes, ah, well, okay, now we've read it. And did not, they're not presenting it to you. And I am very disappointed.
So the, the fact that they're not presenting it to us doesn't mean that they went, oh, nice, and tossed it aside. We get a lot of feedback in a lot of different ways. What we're talking about tonight is a statistically significant survey. So I mean, there's a lot of ways you can get information, but to get a statistically significant survey is a big undertaking, and it's important because then it doesn't skew one way or another, it doesn't skew toward age or, or side of town or gender. It's tried to balance out the entire community and get feedback from the entire community, not just from a single group. And when people self-select, with that other feedback form that we had, the other survey, it was people just chiming in because they wanted to.
It was the same survey.
It's the same survey, but it's not a random survey in that, in that manner, just people self-selecting to participate. So they didn't just dismiss the information, but we want to focus on the information that accurately and entirely represents the city based on this statistics, the statistically significant results of this.
What I found significant is they, Park and Rec came back to Creekside, and they let us know that, and I think this is significant, 44% of respondents had participated in a Creekside program in the past year. So I think that is significant, that of this significant survey, 44% of all the households forty-four percent of all the households said that they had participated. I also am curious why a kids' club would get fifteen hundred feet and seniors have shared square feet. If you have kids designated area, why wouldn't you have a senior designated area? And in that senior designated area, you could have the fixed programs, like the boutique and rocks and all those fixed programs. I would, I would like to understand why kids' club gets fifteen hundred square feet and seniors have to share and don't get any fixed space. And the other thing, of course, I am always concerned about is cost. And I am concerned about the cost of membership. And have, you haven't even looked at it, based on three, where are you, okay? I'm concerned about the cost and how an average household that has, uh, per capita income in the last twelve months in two thousand twenty-two, uh, forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-one dollars is going to be able to participate. I know there's, there's, uh, I know a lot of people spend a lot in sports, but they spend it on programs like hockey or team soccer or team basketball. They're gonna, they are going to spend that money on their kids in their organized sports. They're not going to go, hey, I want to go to the pool and, uh, I'm just presenting that because part of the statistical survey was, how much do you spend on sports? And I know, because I had my kids in sports, is that, that big money is for your kids in organized sports.
So let me just, because we've got to wrap up here, and let me, let me just answer. The presentation that I got from Parks last week, I saw four different possibilities in terms of how the building was going to lay out and where it was going to go. None of it was set in stone. So to say that kids get fifteen hundred square feet and we're not sure what seniors get, that hasn't been decided yet. And if you had the conversation and if you saw the presentation with Park and Rec, you know, they, I'm sure they said that in that presentation. So we are, we are, that's placeholder now. We haven't, nothing is locked in yet, the conversation continues. And so to, to say that, but we're, we're out of time here. And the other thing that I want to say, from a cost perspective, we're looking at running the, the new Community Health and Wellness Center to recover as much cost of the operating cost as possible, because otherwise, it's a burden to taxpayers as a whole. And we want to make sure that we recover as much user cost as possible. And we're also working very hard to make sure that it's a sliding scale. So folks with less ability to pay, pay less, folks with more ability to pay, pay more. And that's, that's what I can tell you on those two issues that, those two concerns that you might have. Very quickly here, thirty seconds.
Okay.
Got to head downstairs.
Uh, actually, we had a presentation from Park and Rec, and they said no fixed space. They came to Creekside.
They said no single-use space is what they told you, isn't it?
Yes.
That's different than fixed space. No single-use space because we want to make sure the Health and Wellness Center is available and usable by a wide variety of folks without saying this specific is, for example, the boutique and only the boutique. Or this specific space is for, give me another example here.
Good job.
Or because a wood shop is a single-use space, and that makes no sense in a city of ninety-one thousand to have a single-use space.
Except you have kids' club, which is a.
Ninety-five activities. I mean, that's, that's not a single-use space.
It's not, yeah.
Things that's set aside.
You're not going to have a jungle gym there?
Don't know.
I don't know, we're still trying to decide.
Nobody's decided anything like that yet, so.
We will, uh, we, we can, this conversation continues. So, uh, past time, thank you all for being here this evening, appreciate it. Council, I look for a motion to adjourn.